Good evening, we'll call this meeting to order for USD 348 Board of Education. I move we approve the agenda as presented with the following changes. That we strike the budget hearing under financial report due to a publication error. To be compliant with that, we had to schedule the special meeting for Wednesday. So we're striking that on the agenda for tonight. And then under recognitions, we need to add Josie Boyle on item two along with Anna Burnett. May I have a second? Carrie seconded. All those in favor of approving the agenda with those two changes, please say aye and raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six zero. All right, I move we enter executive session with Mr. Dorothy to discuss employment considerations pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under coma. And the open meeting will resume in the auditorium at 6:45 PM. May I have a second? Chris has seconded. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six zero, executive session. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, six zero and Chris was the second. Thank you. All right, we will call this meeting back to order. May I have an approval for the consent agenda, please? Carrie has moved. Is there a second? I looked you in the eye. You got it. Chris seconded. Carrie moved. Chris seconded. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as presented, please say aye and raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six zero. Okay, recognitions. So, we are not live streaming tonight, but this is recorded and hope that folks can see this later. But first up is recognition for the meal distribution volunteers. Briefly, the mobilization effort for distributing meals in our district has been nothing short of extraordinary and we wanted to take the opportunity tonight as we approach the end of the summer to give thanks and celebrate that. As of August 9th, it was slated to have delivered or distributed, excuse me, 60,000 meals from March until August 9th, which is really extraordinary for a number of reasons. This program has evolved from in the beginning of the week and a half after the first closure on Friday, the 13th in March, when that decision came from the county. By that next week, meals were happening. And it began with community partners and meal sites being in different places, including Baker University, Baldwin First United Methodist Church, the Baldwin City Library, the Lumberyard Art Center, First Assembly, Church of God, and Baldwin Academy of Dance and Voice. And from there, the way this program has been very agile, it has evolved as it's gone through because Nicole Burnett, the food services director, has been so just inventive with, okay, we need to tweak it this way. This isn't working, so let's do it like that. And then all of a sudden, all the meals were going from the library and you were getting seven meals at a time. So meals currently are distributed on Mondays and Thursdays. And there were some other sorts of pivots that happened in between the way it first began for those first few weeks in March and April to how it is happening now. And the culmination of that is 60,000 meals, countless community volunteers, and a really inventive approach with how to mobilize staff. And so, though we would love to give certificates and list all of the names, we would be here for an hour and we would be definitely supporting the USPS, but that's another issue. But we do want to thank them and I didn't want it to be impersonal even though we were thanking all these people as a group. So what we are doing is saying a huge thanks. And let me get official here. The Baldwin City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. On this day, August 17th, 2020, the Board of Education recognizes, congratulates, and I would add thanks to all of the meal service staff and volunteers from March through August who have made all of this possible. In many communities, this program was not able to be sustained. And that's certainly not a knock in any way because it's difficult to sustain all this. We've been very fortunate here to have the leadership that we've had and then also the people power to see it through and to keep it going. And so in lieu of certificates, just so everybody knows, you can tell people if you volunteered or you know people who volunteered today went by the banks and there's going to be thank you announcements to all the volunteers that are circulating on the marquees for a couple of weeks. So, thank you again and we will move on to the next couple of recognitions. All right, the next two, one of these was an amendment at the beginning, include Anna Burnett and Josie Boyle. These are two 2020 senior graduates and they have both been recognized by the United Soccer Coaches Association, which is the world's largest soccer coaching association. And this is a big deal because Anna Burnett received the Scholar All-America Team designation, which is incredible and that is a testament to what she did both in the classroom and on the field. And Josie Boyle was named as All-State Honorable Mention, All-America Selection, both by the United Soccer Coaches Association. That news came forward over the summer. And even though they're graduates, we wanted to definitely bring that forward, congratulate them both. And in particular, this was actually planned before recent events, but because Anna and Josie are such distinguished athletes, Anna was recruited to Emporia State and Josie was recruited to Washburn. And both of these two girls lost their spring senior soccer season. And in girls soccer, in high school, you play soccer in the spring, but in college, you play in the fall. So these two girls, the only seniors that I know of, have literally just lost not one, but two seasons in a row. And so, we're not recognizing them because that happened. It just, I think, made it all that much more important that we do so. Despite the fact that they're at Washburn and Emporia, they're still always Baldwin Bulldogs and we're proud of them. So Josie and Anna, Baldwin City Board of Education of USD 348, supports and promotes excellence in all school activities, even if you are at a different school now. So on this day, August 17th, 2020, the Board of Education recognizes and congratulates you on your awards from the United Soccer Coaches Association. So congrats. All right, moving on. And please keep things like this coming. Don't be shy. It takes very little time to take these moments of celebration and it's important. So do not be bashful. All right, public comment. Is there anyone here in person that would like to make public comment? It does not appear so. We did receive a few, like three correspondences to the public comments email address. Three of them were solicitations to sell various things, to which I gave the reply, no, thank you. But we do have one legitimate one that was sent. This is sort of dated. It was sent August 4th after our last meeting. It was sent to not just the public comments, but to other email addresses. It has been answered, but because it was sent to the public comments address, there is a legal obligation to go ahead and read it out loud. So I will do some now. This is from Miranda Hammack. And this was sent on August the 4th. It was responded to, but just reading it for the record. "Good morning. After the board meeting last night and clarifications on the masks, I have to say I'm sorely disappointed with the district's leadership and lack of fight to allow the students an opportunity to remove their masks during the school day unless the students are outside. As part of the Unified Command for Douglas County, does our district not have an opportunity to provide any opinions, information, or pushback on the all-day slash everyday mask rule? I spoke at the 727 board meeting about the mental health of our students and I'm going to reiterate again that I really feel as though all focus is on physical health with zero consideration for these students' mental health. I have some follow-up questions for each school as I will have students in the PCIC and junior high. What is the junior high doing to allow 7th and 8th graders outside time to remove their masks during the day? If I send my kids snacks for during the day, does that mean they will have additional opportunities to remove their masks? What is the actual plan for implement weather days? We live in Kansas and it is a real possibility for there to be rainy days or snowy days with no opportunity to spend periods of time outside. If that is the case, what is each school's actual plan for the students to remove their masks? At what point will we know what the hybrid option online learning will really look like for each school? The district has gone in depth on the fully virtual option." I believe the patron means remote, just for consistency. "But the hybrid online option has not been described for each school. What is the time commitment? How are teachers committing to not be 100% app-based learning like last year? How do the teachers and schools intend to provide instruction and lessons without a SLS or an in-person instructor? Some lessons cannot be administered in a 30-minute Zoom limited timeframe and it is not realistic for a teacher to provide instruction on a Zoom call with 25 students online. Has the district considered purchasing a license so the time limit is no longer a factor? I would love to hear responses from each principal separately as I know the circumstances within each school." Very, thank you, Miranda Hammack. And just for anyone who's watching later, if there are still questions that are unanswered, the principals each provided parent meetings via Zoom that were live in real time and then also recorded and archived for folks to go back to. That is all the public comment I have unless we've seen anything come in in the meantime. Okay, perfect. Moving on to financial report. We struck the budget hearing. That's happening Wednesday. And so we will move on to classified base rates. Classified base rates. Let's see, so this establishes the base rate that a classified person would make as they entered this district and it also is what we pay the substitute for any particular position. For the last few years, we have increased the base by about half of the amount of the raise for that year, which is what we have on board docs right now. You could use a different amount. You could do a third or a quarter or whatever you choose. But for right now, we have half of the raise added to the base rate. Thoughts or questions on that? Okay, so we would just look for approval to increase the base rates as we presented there.
I move that we approve the classified base rate increases. Sorry?
All right, Chris moved and Tony seconded to approve the classified base rates as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. All those opposed? Six zero. Thank you. All right, I think moving on to, we have nothing for administrative reports tonight slated. So we'll go ahead and move to old business. Reopening plan.
Yes, I wanted to talk tonight with you about the reopening guidance that came from Douglas County that they've been working on for quite a while. They put out a press release today and they also put out the plan today. That plan will be sent out to all of our parents, all of our staff, everyone tomorrow. So we'll get that out there. I will have Dan Partridge, who is the manager for Lawrence Douglas County Health Department, should be on the phone here shortly. I think he has a short presentation about this and then we'll be ready to answer any questions you might have about the development of this plan, why something's the way it is. There are a few items on here that we might want to have some discussion on. But I thought the plan sets things up so it's easier for us to determine when we should be in school, not in school, what protocols we should have in place depending on what are, how many cases there are in the county, or absenteeism in our buildings by students or staff. And so it gives us some guidelines there on how to do that rather than us trying to figure out when the best time would be. We will be reporting our absenteeism to the county on a daily basis so that they can track across the entire county how many kids are missing from school, for what reasons. And so most certainly, I believe that Lisa Patrick will be filling that out and providing that information. Filling that information in and sending it into the county because she will be the one with the firsthand information about why a student might be wrong, gone from school that day. So, she'll be doing that. So, anyway, I hope Dan calls here pretty soon. But you will see that this guidance goes on a green, yellow, orange, and red. If we are in orange or red, either one of those categories, we are not in school. If we are in green is good. That means there's less than 5% of the tests that are positive in the county. If we're in yellow, which is where we are right now, we have some protocols that we have to follow. Some of the things that you may have questions about and Dan can answer very well are the things on activities. There are a number of items in there that talk about high risk, moderate risk, and low risk on those activities. So it's very possible that some activities may be active and going while other activities are not allowed to participate. Most certainly, that may be hard for some parents to understand. But most certainly, the medical community drew lines on what they, because of what the kids do, how close the contact, and how sustained that contact is to make a decision on whether or not they could participate in activities. All of our activities started today. They have practices today. Most certainly, we'll get them started because we never know if they shift into the green, they're all a go with some protocols that still have to be followed. But, let me catch this. Dan?
Yes, hi, Paul. This is Dan.
Dan, I have you on speakerphone and I'm going to put you up to the microphone here. And I will try and repeat questions from folks here in the room if they have questions. But other than that, we were just kind of covering the document a little bit, just the basics on it. So I might turn this over to you and I'll put a microphone on you so everybody can hear you.
All right. Well, thank you first for having me. And you stopped me. This is something you've already covered. But the grid or the table on page two is the meat, potatoes of all of this. And so it talks about the green, yellow, orange, and red phase. And just for perspective, as we think about, the question that I think is at the top of everyone's mind is, well, what phase are we in? And we're right there, right in the middle between green and yellow. It's a 5.2 number, at least last week. That number's evolving a little bit. And I think it could go either way right now. So that's where we would be today is yellow. The last three weeks before that, we would have been in green. So that's kind of, I think, where we might be at a starting point. The kind of unknown factor in all of this is that as KU students continue and arrive and we learned today that their mask testing has already begun and they're testing well over 1,000 people a day. As we get those results in line and in our system, we don't know what that's going to do to our positive test percent or our case rate in general. And so we'll have to see where that goes. I would say early returns are that it's not, positive rate is lower than the 5%, so it's going to take it downwards slightly if that trend continues. But we will see. The thing that's, another unknown though, is the new cases. And we are expecting and we're trying to prepare our community to expect that that number starts to increase as students come back online. And then really, as we, you know, the other unknown is what will, you know, K-12 education, what will that do to our case rate as well? Those two things are things that we'll have to monitor and pay attention to. But I would say Unified Command, the structure that we put in place and the structure that Paul participates in, gives us a platform and an opportunity to do that monitoring and evaluation. And then that on-the-fly, in-the-real-time problem solving as we see these, you know, the data comes in. So I think we have a plan that's adaptable. We have a system that's going to allow us to stay connected to the data, stay connected to the disease trends, not only in Douglas County but for Baldwin City. We've been working to make sure that we can understand not just at a county level or a Lawrence level where the disease is going, but also at every community level. So that's something we'll be working with Paul and communicating with him moving forward to as well. And because all of that is to say, this guidance and the principals behind it are really about giving you the tools to be the decision makers. And so, their recommendations, we hope that you follow them. But a big part of what we're trying to do here is to be responsive and to serve you. And so, I think that would might be a good place to maybe just pause and see if there are questions because I really don't want to bore you with stuff that you already feel like you've got familiarity and comfort level with. So if you have questions, I think I'm, you know, feeling you up to pose them. Sports and extracurricular activities are another big thing that everyone wants to talk about. And if we stay, if, you know, if yellow is where the data keeps us, then those high-risk activities would be in the recommended guidance, not be moving forward. So the highest things are football, wrestling, soccer, dance. So these are things that people care about, but the guidance would say that if you're in yellow, orange, or red, that those things are not the truth. So up to that, I'm ready to take questions. All of you've got to line up far away.
Questions?
Is the number of students less than or equal to 3% in the green on the absenteeism? That's where my question is. Or is it less than or equal to 3% who are absent? Is that of students onsite or of students onsite and remote?
Dan, her question is on the absenteeism for students. She is asking, it's less than 3% for green? She wanted to know, is that only the students that are onsite? Or is that counting the remote students also?
Well, I think that, I mean, I'm going to have to ask you a question on that because I don't know how you, what's your attendance process? How will you know in real time absenteeism for virtual students? I guess I was assuming it was in-class only because you wouldn't have real-time knowledge of that.
I think it would be difficult for us to track the remote, you know, the number of students there, including that, and that the 3% would be affected by the number of kids that we have actually onsite. That would be my...
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Sure. Carrie?
With activities, what would be examples of the safer activities?
Say that again.
What would be an example of the safer activities?
Oh, she is asking on the activities, what would be safer activities?
So if you go down to the page three, I don't, you have that for them?
They have it. It's been sent to them in an email, so they have it digitally.
Okay, well, when you look at that and go to the third, the last page, the third page, there, we've got them stratified by high, modern, and low risk. So how we've talked about moderate risk would be sports that involve close sustained contact, but with protective equipment in place that they reduce the likelihood of respiratory particle transmission, or there's internet in close contact, you know, or it's sports that use equipment that can be cleaned between participants. So it's kind of a nuanced thing. But the examples of that would be volleyball, baseball, softball, gymnastics, some elements of track, tennis. You know, if there's a particular sport that you're interested in, I can try to tackle it that way as well. Then on the lower risk, that's things that can be done, sports that can be done with social distancing. And that would be things like cross-country, the other kinds of track events like javelin or shot put, individual swimming, golf. Those are probably the ones that are most prevalent in your school.
Okay, thank you. I was just trying to visualize.
Sure.
Thank you.
Who else?
There we go, okay. So in relation to the criteria to be in the green category, do all of those criteria need to be met to be considered green? Or is it a, two of those three categories need to be met to be green?
Dan, if we're in one of the categories, like green or yellow or orange, whichever one, how many of those criteria do we have to meet to be in that criteria or shifting to another criteria?
Well, we should probably maybe clarify that a little bit. To me, you'd need to meet all of them. There's some, but I would say that's where we would start. But there's always going to be, at least I believe, should be some subjective, some space for subjective reasoning on this. Because, you know, I don't think that we really know or can anticipate where this journey will take us and what will happen with, you know, over the next few months. And so, I view this as a starting point in that we're going to try to adhere to it really closely. But I don't want to just be very black and white and say, this is it and it's never going to change. Because I want to be responsive to a changing environment. We don't know yet what that's going to look like. But I, because I also think that some of these things might be, they're not all equally important. Because to be honest, the absenteeism piece wasn't part of our early thinking. It was really in response to the, the state guidance that put out, that they had that criteria in there. They also had the staffing criteria, which we, in the end, didn't really adopt in the local guidance. It felt like a ramble, but a long way around of saying, probably this is the way it is, and that it's, you meet all of them. But I want to hold, hold out the possibility that we can critically examine this and say, you know, let's, let's, let's make a decision in a different way. What we anticipate doing at the Health Department is putting together a website that gives you this data anytime you want to look at it. We kind of got into a rhythm of updating some of these measures on Thursday afternoon, and so we might continue doing that. But really, our goal is, is to make sure that you have this, this information accessible to you whenever you want it or need it. And of course, we're always available, you know, if there's a question or something that you don't see or that you need to understand more clearly. So the hope is, is that this is something that you can just kind of use on your own without a lot of, you know, meddling by the Health Department, but we're certainly here to be helpful. We want to be helpful and not maddening.
So Dan, let me, let me give you a scenario here of where they're going. And I think I know the answer to this, but let's say the county is less than, less than 5% on the, the testing, the positive test. But Darwin is facing more than 10% absenteeism. Where would that put us?
I think you'd go down to yellow or orange, for sure. I mean, I, I would say, if, if you've got more than 10% absenteeism above your normal, what you, what you saw last year, I mean, I don't even know, what, what is the normal? What was your 2019, 2020?
We've run, oh, maybe, maybe around 6% would be a norm. We're usually in the 90, 90-some percent in attendance every day. That's our norm. So 10%, if we were down into the 80s, and it, I guess it would be, what, what is it attributed to? Is it the flu? Or is it, or is it COVID-19?
Yeah. Well, here, here's what I'd say. So that 10% would be on top of your baseline of, let's just call it 6%. So 16% absenteeism is the scenario I think you're putting out there. And we will, we will know your positive case, case rate by your school district. And so when we get in that kind of situation, you know, you're going to know, we're going to be working together to problem solve. And so if that 16% absenteeism is being driven by positive COVID, then, then yeah, we're going to be encouraging you to move to the right on this, this matrix.
Okay. Very good. Thanks, Dan.
Okay, I'll take one more question here.
Okay.
And I don't want to get Dan in trouble with his job here, but I'll ask kind of an opinion question here, related to the consistency in these recommendations across county lines. So I'm asking these questions in some ways, because looking at our sports league, I think we cover five or six counties, and kind of not trying to monitor all those, or again, get Dan in trouble by trying to answer this question about his colleagues in other counties. But, but, but Dan, any thoughts on whether this, these types of recommendations from Douglas County will be similar in nature to Johnson County, Miami County, Franklin County, other surrounding areas?
I can answer part of this, and I'll let Dan go ahead and answer it. But I do know that the committee, the command, looked at plans from Johnson County, Wyandotte County, several counties around us, to see what they were doing as part of deciding what they felt was best for Douglas County. Dan, the question was, how are we comparing how our plan came out with surrounding counties? I'll let you talk.
Okay. So first off, we developed this guidance in collaboration with the University of Kansas and their pandemic medical advisory team, and along with our health officer and the LNH Health infectious disease physician, Dr. Schremscher, Dr. Schremscher, Dr. Marcelino, and the KU physicians that have spent many hours putting this together. And they didn't do it in a vacuum. We took a look at Johnson County's guidance. We, of course, received the state guidance. And our mantra all through this process is that we wanted to be guided by science and the evidence, and wanted to give the physicians liberty or latitude to not try to get into the political side of things, and just give us their medical and science opinion. And so my advice to Dr. Schremscher and Dr. Marcelino and the physicians was, look at these other plans, align them as you see fit, and try not to conflict with other plans, but also don't feel like you have no room for your own professional judgment. And so I guess that's the best answer I could give. They were informed by it, but they were also being asked to use their expertise. And I would say, you know, these are physicians that have, you know, the KUT helped create the Johnson County guidance, if they want. So we feel good about the quality of the guidance that, or the, you know, the work that the physicians provided us. We feel good about the, the evidence and the recommendations that we put forward.
Okay. Anyone else? Any other questions?
I have a science question.
Sure.
Mr. Partridge, if you can hear me, thank you for spending time with us. I have a science-related question, since you brought that up, because I am, I'm not a doctor, and this is probably the one question that I've received from patrons more than anything else over the past, I would say, week and a half to two weeks. But in terms of the positive test rate, and I know that's universally how experts are quantifying this, because it's just so hard to quantify in the first place. And so I apologize if this is a stupid question, but I haven't known how to answer it, and it's a question I've gotten a lot. But when we're taking the positive test rates, just of those who've been tested versus the percentage of the population, can you explain the science of that? Because there are many who are, you know, who don't understand, without the benefit of universal testing, if folks who have known contact and, and/or are symptomatic are the ones who are going in and allowed to be tested, you know, in lieu of just having daily tests available for everyone, the way I wish we would, isn't that already then, therefore, sort of a skewed sample? For example, as a sociology student, I was taught that if I'm doing a sociological study, and I'm trying to find the percentage of people whose favorite color are pink, and I only go on campus and find people who are wearing the color pink, the odds that they choose the color pink might be increased. I know it's probably just the best of what we have, but because I don't know how to answer that from a medical health standpoint, I wondered if you could take this opportunity to speak to that, so that our patrons can hear that as well.
Dan, did you hear all of that?
Oh, gosh. All right, Paul, I, I heard, I heard someone, I think she was asking about what's the validity of percent positives?
Yeah. Relative to the, to, to the fact that the people, that is, the people getting tested are the people that maybe have symptoms already, or may have had a possible contact and so on, those are the ones getting tested. So would that make a false higher percentage? I guess is the question. Does that hit?
Okay.
Well, not false, but would it skew?
Would it skew the results?
Raise the percentage?
Okay. Well, if you were to look at our, that, the graph of positive tests over time, it was, it usually started out around, you know, 1, 2, 3% during those early months, when we really didn't have a lot of cases, less than one a day. Then as we started opening up the community, especially when we opened up ours, that number shot up to 9%. That's when we issued the closing of bar orders and the mask mandate. We saw those, those numbers drop back down, and they've been trending over the last month in the high pop, excuse me, high fours, just now getting to over 5%. The important thing to think about with positive tests and that, and the percentage there is, is that that's going to be a more, a better indicator, the higher the number of tests are. So the more we're testing, the more reliable that, that percentage becomes. And over the last month, we have seen our, our capacity to test dramatically take off. Early on, you might recall, there was just a big shortage of testing, and the state didn't have the capacity. And so we were not testing very many people at all. And today, between ALNAC and the Health Department, that's easily 100 or 200 a day. And now with the, the kind of ramping up of the university process and ALNAC Health and their, you know, the work they've done to build up a, like, testing capacity for not just the university, but for all K through 12 education systems, those numbers are going to be in the thousands per day. And when you, when you multiply that by, you know, a week, or actually, you know, two weeks, you know, when you take a 14-day rolling average, those are going to be pretty high numbers. And so we believe that's going to be a pretty reliable number. I know when I visited with Udora School Board last Thursday, their question to me was, well, we believe Udora is different than Lawrence. Can we have this consideration that, you know, and not be lumped in with Lawrence? And so I, I took a look at their numbers, and really, the numbers would say Udora doesn't look any different than Lawrence, and in fact, they have higher numbers, when you take it by, uh, per thousand rate. I was wishing that I had time today to run those numbers for you, because I think, I mean, if I was in your shoes, I want to know what this fall would look like. I didn't get to it, but I will communicate that to Paul, and he can pass that on. But my, my, I would be surprised if you looked different than the rest of Douglas County. And so that's another way of saying, when you can generalize a number across different communities, that the number has validity.
Thanks, Dan. Any other questions? Board members, anyone? Dan, we really appreciate you doing this tonight, visiting with our board, allowing them to ask you some questions, to help them inform themselves. We also appreciate the, the command and getting this document together, so that school districts can have this to help us guide our decisions in the future through this fall. So really appreciate, really appreciate you taking your time to do this for us.
Happy to do so. Happy to do it as often as needed, because, you know, we, we want to be responsive to your needs, so please let us know what those are.
And, and Dan, we probably will have you back again sometime this fall. I, I really hope not, but, but we may have you back in again to talk with them. So...
That would be great, and I'd love, I'd love to be able to make, do that in person or, because I know this is less than optimal way to communicate.
Oh, it's worked. It's worked. All right. Well, Dan, thank you very much, and we'll, we'll, we'll hang up, and we'll go on with our board meeting, but thank you for doing this.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much, all of you.
Okay. Discussion, any other comments regarding the reopening document? Other reopening questions you might have tonight? We've talked about a lot of things on reopening, so most certainly, we've covered a lot of ground.
I, I do. Got to work, Dan. So just, just for our own internal purposes here, if we are moving between one of these, you know, green, yellow, orange, or red phases here, approximately how long would we rest in that spot as a district? Like, if we're, if we're shifting from yellow to orange, for instance, would that be a decision we're making for, and not just a day, obviously, but would that be, would that stand for the next school week?
I think that is a discussion with the command or the, the medical people on how long, Lisa Patrick would definitely be involved in that conversation about, you know, do we need to stay in this for the 14 days? You see that this is rolling 13 days. But most certainly, there could be aspects that maybe make it a little shorter than that, could make it longer than that. But, so, yeah, I think the concern has been, well, today we're in yellow, are we in, we could be in orange tomorrow, and then back to yellow, what do we do? Well, it won't shift that fast. I think they did answer a question that Jana had on a Thursday. They tell us we're going to orange, so we're closing. Does that mean Friday we're closed? Or does it mean they let us do what we need to do on Friday, and then we're closed on Monday? The answer came back, yes, you would come back to school on Friday, grab your assignments, grab your device, take that home, and then Monday, we'd start the next 14 days, 10 days, whatever that happens to be, depending on the advice.
Okay. That's perfect. And one other remaining question or two about the absenteeism figures here. I'm a little concerned if that's all cause absenteeism, like not just, you know, not 3% of COVID-related illnesses. I'm a little concerned that, you know, I think parents and kids are going to be more inclined to stay home if they have the sniffles this year than they would have in previous years. So I'm sort of anticipating those numbers of not attending school being higher anyway. That's a pretty low bar to hit, 6% if we're, you know, in just any one of our criteria, if we're coming back into school, if it, if it's a negative COVID test, for instance, that, that, or if you go back to school, we may have some logistical issues of even pulling some of those things off. And I don't, I don't know if this is a question, this is a rant or whatever, but this, I mean, this, this conversation, you got to be thinking about how, how, that's an important measure to look at, but also a very, potentially very tricky one for us to routinely hit.
It, it is, and it's, it's most certainly trying to find out specifically, why is that child gone? Is it because we feel like we have the normal flu, went to the doctor, I'm out, but they tested me for COVID, and I was negative? So most certainly, it all counts in there. But as Dan said, what are typical average absenteeism, which is every single day, you take that off the top, then you start counting, adding this to that. So if our average is 6% across the district, then you start from there. So green is up to 9% then total. So it does start from there. But I also think every time, this is guidance, and it's helpful, but I still think it comes down to conversations with them directly. We have this many kids gone, but we think we can still do this, we've got plenty of staff, we're not, we still think we can get this done, and we don't think this isn't spreading, it's not a breakout. Then I think we could go ahead and have it. But I know what you're saying, those numbers look pretty low percentage, especially for any district. That looks pretty, pretty low to be saying, okay, I think we need to close school. But it could move us from one category to another. This, this chart, if, if I want some of these things, that if I... This, this chart, if, if I want some of these things, that if I want my child in school, then we need to follow rules, and my neighbors need to follow the rules here, or the kids might not be in school. This, this is up to everybody helping here, so the spread stops. That's an important thing about this. If, if I want my son to play football on Friday nights, then I need to help with this and make sure this doesn't spread anymore. And that doesn't mean go out and have a fistfight with somebody. What it means is you follow and be a role model and follow the orders so it doesn't go any further, so maybe we can be in the green and those things can happen. So that's an important piece of this, is just getting everybody to understand, you have to follow the rules, because once we step into yellow, orange, and red, we start losing things that everybody would like to have. And that will be part of my messaging as we go along here before school starts on this and, um, to let parents know, but, and I, I, they most certainly, I think, understand that, but saying it reinforces it, so. Any other questions? I, I will comment that I am really glad that we have this. Will it make it black and white? No, it won't, it'll be gray still. At least I feel like we've got something we can work from, and it came from the medical, actually, we're lucky in Douglas County to have the medical people we have to back us up. Some, there are some counties out there don't, don't have this at all hardly, so, um, and a county that is interested, and this is important to, and they take serious, uh, many counties, uh, and those counties may not hardly, have hardly any cases. Some of those counties are just ignoring this. So it's important that we do this for everybody in this county, not just the kids, that's important, with our families and everybody that lives in this county, so.
All right, anything else to add?
I, I do not tonight.
Okay. Uh, we'll move on to the Equity Committee update, please.
All right, thank you. I, uh, I did not bring my notes tonight, and so I'm, I'm doing this report from memory, and I welcome, uh, corrections or auditions by other committee, um, members. But I, I believe we last met on July 30th, uh, after several attempts to try to schedule a meeting. And, um, those present, uh, were Susan Schoeffelbein, uh, myself, Paul Dorothy, and Brent Brittingham. And we discussed some of the initiatives that I'd reported on, uh, last month, and trying to move forward on those. And so three, um, action items that we discussed, uh, were Susan agreed to try to investigate, uh, some kind of criteria or protocol for doing equity assessments of curriculum changes. So we're trying to move forward on those kinds of plans. I agreed to reach out to, uh, members of, uh, the school district and to colleagues at, at Baker to try to identify, uh, further resources that we can, uh, look at over the next, uh, several months, to try to get a, a handle on some of the best practices, uh, in, uh, equity in the schools, and to just do a lot of research so that we aren't taking missteps in doing this in a, in a plural way, which is one of the great fears that, that we have. Um, and then third, we're going to start, uh, gathering data that we already, that we already, uh, collect on, uh, differences among, uh, student groups and disciplinary, uh, practices, uh, the, the different kinds of policies that we implement and where there might be differences, if in fact there are differences, so that we know, uh, where we stand. Um, so I felt good that we were, uh, being very concrete and taking steps and, and, uh, things that we can identify and move forward on. But toward the end of the meeting, we all, uh, further discussed of all the, all the various things that are going on that we just discussed, and just trying to get the schools back open. So we sort of agreed as a committee that perhaps what we would do is, is, uh, take some time off, not that these issues aren't important, and not that we don't want to make them a priority, but try to, try to work on opening the schools, and that we would reconvene, uh, in September, uh, to continue to move forward. Uh, so again, this is not any, uh, indication of, uh, the fact that we think these issues are unimportant, but we just wanted to acknowledge that there are some complexities that are, uh, for lack of a better metaphor, sucking all the air out of the room. And so, uh, that's sort of where we stand. Uh, we aren't going to, we aren't going to meet this month, uh, probably, uh, after, uh, Labor Day, when, when schools are open, we'll get together again and, and, uh, report on the, the tasks that we've taken on. So I would ask my fellow committee members, is that an accurate summary of, of what we And I would be happy for any of the three of us up here on, on the stage to stand for questions.
Did you guys already take a look at the discipline data to see if there was any disproportionality within that, or was that too big?
That's what we're doing, that's what we're, we have not done that.
Thank you, Tony, thank you, group. Um, I appreciate that. Let's see, what is next? It is new business. We don't have anything slated for new business. Um, so now we are at the board member input portion of our meeting. Co-op report, which is Chris and Susan and Tony alternate, right? Yes?
That's correct, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, um, since Susan doesn't pick up her mic, I'm gonna, I guess get that out. Well, okay, so, so last Tuesday, uh, we got the, um, uh, three committees together for our board meeting. Uh, we did have the joy of having a meeting outdoors, uh, because we had some miscommunication over here with, with getting the, so we didn't open up the, the door, which was a rather nice way to have a meeting, actually, so we're talking about. Um, so, so the, the co-op staff is, is currently, um, making plenty of adjustments to the, to each of the three districts, uh, reopening plans, uh, contacting parents about what their, um, enrollment preferences have been, uh, and making adjustments accordingly to their, to their, um, individualized education plans, uh, for each individual kid. So, um, one, actually, probably the only real big update for you guys today is just to want you all to be aware, um, that we are currently within the co-op about 45 to 50 paraprofessionals short for this year. Um, so a lot, the situations that are happening here are, a lot of paraprofessionals, um, are, um, resigning the last few weeks here to take care of their kids at home or for their various circumstances. This is not a, a ball of Udora-Wellsville issue, uh, there are some communities across Kansas who are down 50% of their, uh, typical paras. Uh, so we're actually in fairly good shape by state comparisons, but, um, but that will certainly lead to some, some complications if those, uh, positions are not filled. They are posted already, so if you have anybody, um, who, uh, likes kids, is looking for a job, uh, there are plenty of paraprofessional jobs right now, and they're really fantastic, uh, jobs too. So, um, that's the only big updates from, from the co-op I can remember. Susan, I leave anything out. Okay. Any questions from anyone?
I can't think of anything, but I will later. It's that kind of day, where I will think of one later. Thanks, Chris, and Susan, Tony. All right, um, miscellaneous, um, does any board member have anything they would like to bring up during miscellaneous? I have an update for you, but I want to let you guys go first if there's something else. Okay, so, um, just to recap, um, we hosted a district site council Zoom meeting last Tuesday night, just want to keep you guys apprised of our process. Um, again, that group was created, uh, originally as sort of a fulfillment of KISA standards, but I'm so glad that we have this group, KISA or no KISA, because it really has been a great way to have another touch point among patrons. The district site council, unlike the other building-level site councils, is, um, intentionally meant to be comprised of staff, parents, and community members, um, so a little bit different makeup to that, um, because so, so many of you are new. I'm just going to list who's on that group, that way if there's ever a need, um, I think it'd just be nice for everyone to know. Uh, we have Cameron Schneider from the Junior High, Jeanette Blackmar, the Director of the Lumberyard Arts Center, Debbie Baldwin, High School Counselor, Kelly Newfeld, he owns Farm Bureau Insurance, Dr. Kelly Welch, Econ Professor from University of Kansas, Tanya Barons, I'm not sure what her exact title is, but I know she's in healthcare, and she's very knowledgeable because she had many medical-related questions for us the other night. Jim Sears, uh, he was formerly of, um, he's retired from Mid-America Bank, correct, or Kansas State Bank?
Baldwin State.
Baldwin State Bank, keep going, sorry, I knew it was one of the banks. Um, uh, Dr. Amy Wintermantle from Baker University, and then also on that meeting was Andy Parks, uh, Jana, and, uh, Mr. Dorothy, and myself. So it's a good group, um, we met for a little over an hour, and, um, Mr. Dorothy and Jana kind of reviewed everything, they had lots of great questions, but I just, um, wanted to let you, it was more of the same of what we've been talking about here, but I think that having another layer is just always another opportunity for people to ask questions in a slightly different way that makes you, um, think differently or more intentionally about all of your answers. So it's, it's a good group. So we did that last Tuesday night, just so you guys are aware. The requirement is to do one of those meetings once a semester, um, but we did one at the beginning of the summer and thought it would be appropriate, given everything going on, to do one again, and we'll plan to do another one in the fall. So that's the update on that, unless anyone has questions about that. Or Andy, Jana, or Paul, if I missed something relevant? Okay. Okay, superintendents report, please.
Uh, I just had one thing. Um, I, I, I know last week we got you out of practice on having another board meeting on a Monday night. I am tentatively asking if we could have another special meeting next Monday on the 24th, if that would work with you. We might not have it, but I do know I've got a couple of things coming up, and we might need to have, hopefully, a short meeting on the 24th to accomplish a couple of, uh, things that should happen before school starts. If not the 24th, then probably the 31st, which would be the following Monday, but it would be better to get some of these done on the 24th. So this would be tentative to do that, okay? Okay. So tentative, uh, for the 24th, but I might let you know, uh, later in the week, some, and say, hey, no, um, let's just hold off till the 31st, okay? Thank you.
All right, it is now, uh, executive session time, so, Mr. Dorothy, how much time do you think we need for this?
Um, let's do 15 minutes.
Okay.
With myself.
Okay. Uh, I move we go into executive session to discuss employment considerations pursuant to the exception for non-elected personnel under coma, and the open meeting will resume in the boardroom at 8:18. Is there a second? With Mr. Dorothy.
Oh, and we probably should invite Cindy.
Oh, excuse me, and Cindy Frick, my apologies. So with Mr. Dorothy and Cindy Frick resuming at 8:18, is there a second? Carrie seconded. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Six zero. Okay, we will call this meeting back to order. So we have several things, um, to vote on, uh, in the realm of executive session matters. The first one, I'll take a stab at, and then we will correct me as needed. Okay, I move we suspend the current, um, carryover vacation leave deadline for 12-month, uh, folks.
Yeah, for vacation?
For vacation.
All right.
Uh, that we are, we are lifting the current November 1 deadline for carryover, uh, and extending that throughout the remainder of this fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay. Chris has seconded. And Corey, if I need to circle back with you, we can. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries six zero. All right, we also have things under personnel. Anyone that would like to make that motion, that would be great. Carrie has moved, noting that there were three, three things underneath there that were all, okay, all three of us presented. All right, Carrie moved and Chris seconded. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? Six zero. I think that is everything other than adjournment. Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you, tech crew. I've been kicking myself every week because of not saying thank you out loud, but I'm thinking it in my head. Um, I hope you all have a good night. We need a motion for adjournment, and we will be finished for tonight until Wednesday. Susan has moved, is there a second? Carrie seconded. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned, 8:21.